Going to call the study session to order. The city clerk will call the roll.
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and DeGel are absent and they have excused absences.
The first item of business is clarification for items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
Mayor pro Tim Hen?
I have none.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Webb?
I have none.
And, I have none. Okay, the next item is the Oasis King Palm Trees. Mr. City Manager.
The city engineer, Dave Webb, who is subbing for the public works director as deputy public works director will make the presentation.
Good evening, council. Before you, I put a pack on your desk here and I'll go through it real quick to show you what's in our pack. Included our preservation policy on our trees, council policy G thirteen if you wanted to look, or three, I'm sorry to look at that. I did include one email from one of the residents. Shelley Mason is not able to come tonight, but she wanted to go into the record of her concern about the trees. She's a fourth on, lives in the fourth house up Sandcastle from Marguerite, and she wanted to vocalize her concerns on that. I gave you a copy of the PowerPoint and I apologize for the length of that tonight. But because of the issue and the multi-views involved, we wanted to make sure you had a copy of that and all the various slides because you might want to reference that and look at that. And then lastly, there's a packet from our landscape architect, Arbors, in regard to the specific tree issue we're going to talk tonight. And you'll notice that it says King Palm on the top. And there's some various cut pages in there in regards to the different tree types and some of the characteristics of those trees. So with that, I'd like to basically introduce you to the issue. We recently came across a concern from a resident that was on Sandcastle that's above Oasis. Jimmy DeGrotto gave me a call and said, "We have some current concerns with the new trees that are going in." With that, councilmember Gardner and myself had a meeting with the residents and we met with the landscape architect and our architect tonight and took a look at it and came back and said, "We'd like to take some pictures and study this a little further." So we went ahead and we've gone to several houses now, taken photographic views of that, and they're in your packet and we're going to show you that tonight. And trying to alleviate the concern, we've done some more research on the particular tree type we have. And with that, we kind of wanted to bring it to you and see what your thoughts are on an issue here. Residents would like, hopefully, some kind of written guarantee or something that these trees would not impede their view in the future and that the city would act upon some kind of guarantee in the future should they. And with that, I wanted to go through the presentation and see what council's thoughts are and if we should prepare such a written guarantee. So with that, I'm going to introduce Bob Coffey, who's the landscape arch, excuse me, the project architect. And with him is Bill Raben, who's our landscape architect for the project. And they're going to go through a quick PowerPoint and kind of show you the views and their thoughts on what we have in regard to trees.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I'd like to do with this issue is walk you through the process. We, this isn't an issue that we ignored in the beginning. We did make an effort, concerted effort, to deal with the tree issue, particularly with regard to the residents that live up on Sandcastle. It began with a meeting that we advertised in the association's newsletter. Ed Romeo, who is a member of the Friends of Oasis, coordinated that for us. And we held a meeting on April sixteenth, two thousand and eight, where we first presented the landscape plan. At that time, there were three member, or three residences who lived up on that street that did come forward and speak with us. One, Mr. DeGrotto, and then two people that I don't see here tonight, the Lemons and the Messengers. And I can't remember why we didn't come meet with you, Jim, at that time. I do know that I was left the name of the Messengers and the Lemons. And we went up to their house and we actually used photographs from their backyard to put together our packet, which went to the planning commission. And those photographs will be in here as well. And we used that to do our three-dimensional modeling and then put that into some pictures to try to actually visualize the height of the trees. And ours, it was our intent all along to keep the heights of the palms below anybody's view out to the horizon line, looking at the ocean. The feedback we did get from this meeting is we changed the palm species. The species we had the original, originally there, Bill can speak to, and we went back to a King Palm, which is what is planted there at this moment, primarily because of the growth characteristics of that palm and our feeling that it would never infringe upon the view plane. So there was some helpful input that we did get from the residents that day, and we did modify our plan accordingly. So let me walk through this. What I'm going to do here is just for purposes of orientation, Sandcastle is the street that's on the backside of the property up here, this being Marguerite and Fifth. And we've numbered the residences, beginning right here at the corner of Sandcastle and Marguerite, successively on up. You'll see, these are the people that we've talked with. Mark Pichagian, who's here tonight. The Messengers and the Lemons, who were the people who we spoke with the first time prior to the planning commission hearings. As Dave mentioned, Smiris will not be here this evening. And then Jim's here tonight, his residence here, number six. Let me just go right to the Messenger residence. Is there a way to cut that light? It might be easier to see this a little bit better. Well, all right, well, that helps a little bit. All right. You can barely see this, but there's a flagpole here and I've got a line at it. It sits at forty feet. This is the original Oasis building here. You can see the garden plots here, Marguerite, and we're looking out more or less towards the harbor. But that is a forty-foot height limit there. Now, this is just rotating from their residence, and they're the second residence in up Sandcastle. Once again, the flagpole is here, and you can sort of see that we do have some fairly mature trees on the site. This tree actually still exists. It's across the street. Or, excuse me, this tree comes out, but there's one right behind it that's across the street. So you can see there were some trees pushing this envelope in the prior building as it sat on the site. And then this is just looking back down more towards the south. This is one of the model photographs we did. And if I go back and forth here between the two, I want you to focus on sort of those, here's my red dot here, right there. If you can see that, those two palms there, you'll see this image sort of change. And you can see in this, we're looking at keeping the palm trees more or less below that. And this actually ends up being, as we look at it, a little higher than what reality is. This unfortunately is going to be very difficult for you to see. Hopefully, the photographs you have. We were unable to go back and take a picture at this point in time from the Messenger's backyard. So this one's actually taken from Mark's residence, which is just one, a little bit lower. It sits two feet lower, and it's the residence at the corner. But in this case, you can see this tree here and here, and you'll see that it's a little more to the right because actually the photograph is taken a little more up this way and looking back. This is the ridge line of the building, and in this case, this is the ridge line of the building. And once again, we're looking at about probably ten feet below the horizon line. So at that point in time, our best guess was, is I think, not too far off reality. Now, the Lemons were, lived next door to the Messengers. We did get to their house as well. This is a little better. This is looking straight out, once again, across the existing center. You can see the flagpole again at forty feet at this location. And then this was one of the models that we did at that time as well. And you'll see, just going back to that, the flagpole is-
Is this, is this model now with the new species of trees, or?
This is our, this is what we were using when we were explaining, when we changed the tree species and went back to the planning commission and said, "This is our guess of what these trees are going to look like when they're about thirty feet tall." Our ridge line right here is twenty-five feet. We're showing these trees at about thirty. And right now, that, the fronds of the trees are pushing about thirty. You'll see that.
And the rest of the trees in the background, go back, go back. Yeah, the rest of the trees in the background, those are on private residences beyond this Oasis property.
Well, what you're actually seeing here is we overlaid the photograph, existing photograph, the existing building. So some of the trees you see here are the, are on the existing site, which has now been taken away. You'll see in the new photographs that you're looking at houses here now. And that's the way you can really tell the differences. You're actually looking at some of the houses that you see there. This tree, once again, is, is going to be gone, but you'll see a higher tree that exists in the background right behind it. Now, this view is just rotated a little bit to the left, same one, and then we, this is superimposing again, an idea of what we thought it would look like. And once again, I'll sort of focus on this one palm.
Where's your red dot again?
I'm trying to get it. It's not very strong. Yeah, this thing's not working the laser on it.
Oops, oops, somebody had a good one there.
Oh, thank you. All right. Look at that tree there. And once again, this is the existing, for, this was our model. And then when you go to, once again, they're not here tonight, so I couldn't go back and take a picture. So we've gone one residence up, and if I go back, you see that tree. We're going to walk, and you can see the ridge line of the building. We're going to the next residence, which is going to be more or less looking along this eve line. But you can once again see the height of the trees, the height of this roof. And now you can see the height of that roof, that tree in the background, and the palms are at that same height. So once again, I guess I'm just trying to show this, that our best guess at that time, trying to formulate a model, isn't too are from reality, from what we actually thought it would be. All right, now I'm going to go back, and these are the three residents that we spoke with just a few weeks ago. We started off with Mark's residence. He asked us to do the three poles, which we did right between, at the ridge line of the multipurpose building. We did it right out the front of the drop-off. We did another one right out here at the front of the entry drive. He asked us, for his purposes, to look at two other pole placements, his concern being the street trees we'll have along the street here. So you're going to see these images. And what I'm going to do with these images, we'll start off this image, and I've zeroed in on it with a telephoto lens so you can see it, and I'm going to back up from there. But here we've got thirty feet, thirty-five feet, and forty feet. I'm going to back up just a little bit, same, excuse me. This is now, just taking the telephoto out a little bit, thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet. And then from his patio, this is the thirty-foot mark, and that's the forty-foot mark. So you can see if they all ever got to forty, that would have an impact. If they're at thirty-five, they're sort of, probably not doing much there. They're starting to do something there at thirty feet. They're not having any impact. We've moved the pole now out to the front entrance drive. There's a hill sort of in the background. So what's going to happen is the tree line is going to be moving up. You've got your thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet, backing up a little bit. You see the three. And then this is, once again, it looks from his backyard. You've got two there. The last placement of the pole is right there at the entry drive, thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet. Once again, sort of pulling back, and then you've got the two red arrows here showing where that location is. Then I'm going to draw your attention to four and five. Now, the grade here on Marguerite is dropping. So this is taken at a level about where the garden plots are. We've got a handicap ramp that comes down here, and this other pole placement is that location. Once again, I've zeroed in, thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet, pulling back. This is the thirty feet. This is the forty feet. We've now taken the pole back down the street, so the thirty feet, thirty-five feet, and forty feet, the pole's lower. So you're seeing that the impact for a forty-foot tree is much less. And then here it is, pulled back more or less at the way it'd be seen from his patio. Now, this is a different tree species. Mark asked us to do this so that could be addressed tonight. Bill will address those tree species. They've got different growth characteristics in the palms. But I just wanted to show you the height of the thirty, the thirty-five, and the forty feet. Okay, moving now to the Smiris residence. The fourth residence up, they're sitting more or less directly behind the main event room. We did the same thing again. Here's the ridge line of the main event room, thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet. You can see here, forty feet would start to have an impact, thirty-five would be below. Once again, I've pulled back a little bit, and then, pull all the way back. Here's your thirty feet. Here's your forty feet. We're going to move the pole from this location to this location. You can see the thirty, thirty-five, forty, pulling back a little bit. One more time, there's the thirty and the forty feet. Now, we're going to move the pole out here to the front, right here. We've got thirty, thirty-five, forty, pull back. From the view, it's hard to see, but there's thirty feet there, thirty, forty feet at that location. And we went up to Jim DeGrotto's residence. Each of these lots have a foot to a foot and a half increase in elevation. So as you move up this way, you'll see the shot from his residence is a little higher than the others. Once again, starting with the telephoto, we've got thirty feet, which is about five feet above our line here. And I want, this is a real good shot where you can see the top of the palms. They're all more or less in this area right now, which is pretty close to what we had illustrated in our examples that we had provided. You've got thirty-five feet and forty feet, just pulling back a little bit, pulling back one more time. You can see the thirty feet and the forty feet. Move the pole to the front, thirty feet, thirty-five, forty, pull back a little bit, pull back again. We've got thirty, forty feet. We're going to move the pole again to the front. Now, once again, this is where the existing palms are, right along here. The palms in this area are mostly sixteen, seventeen feet. We have a few eighteen-feets and one twenty and twenty-one-foot palm here. I might point out that when they, when you buy palms, you buy to the center of the palm frond. That's what they charge you for, the amount of the trunk. That's not necessarily the height of the trees. You can see here at twenty-one feet, these fronds are pushing probably twenty-eight, twenty-nine, maybe even thirty feet if they've got one sticking straight up. You know, buying that way. But so when we mentioned the height there, I'm mentioning the height to the ball when the frond comes open. The heights that I'm portraying here are obviously nine, eight to nine feet taller than that. Once again, this is moving it to the very front. Here you can see these palms here, the head, which is a little more than half of that distance of thirty. This is probably one of our seventeen or eighteen footers. Palm fronds are right here, about twenty-eight feet. Here you can see where a lot of those trees were removed from that existing photograph because now you're looking at the backs of all the houses. Before, you had some pretty high sycamore trees in here, and they were blocking that. Pull back a little bit more, see the pole here, and then more of the view. There's the thirty feet and the forty feet. Forty feet from here is just sort of kissing that horizon line. These are the palms, as they're seen from the entry drive coming into the project. We do have, just placed on site right now, some of the elm trees are going in the parking lot. So the intent isn't to have a bosque of trees here like this, but I'm trying to show you the palm trees in this case. And if we come up and look at the entry, these are the trees where the nineteen to twenty-one feet are about here. And then you're getting about the eight, nine feet of height, additional height on the fronds. The ridge line of the roof here is at twenty-five. Now, I've come and stood inside the courtyard. You can see the ridge line at twenty-five, and we're looking back out to the parking lot. You can see here, this is sixteen feet, so like this is one of the shorter trees. It's probably about a seventeen or eighteen footer to the, to the head. So I can go back and leave one of those on there, but that concludes sort of my visual presentation. Are there any particular questions or images you'd like me to go back to that you'd like to look at more specifically?
Well, so we're looking at the height of the trees as they are right now planted. And so, how fast do these trees grow and to what maximum height? I guess that's the question. Over time, are these trees going to?
Let me let Bill come up and talk to the specifics of the growth characteristics in the trees and do that. All right. Bill Raben?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're my shadow.
You're too tall. You're too tall. Mayor, councilman, council members, my name is Bill Raben from Raben-Herman Landscape Architects. And your question was really the introduction to what I want to talk about, which is the specific characteristics of the King Palms. A little bit of history on the selection and the size that they are at this point in time, and also the age at maturity and what we expect them to grow at as an ultimate height. So there's a little package in the back of your presentation. I think there's four sheets. The first one is really my overall description, which I'm going to be talking about. The second sheet is, represents the King Palm itself and gives you the general growth characteristics, horticultural characteristics, and the height estimated as well. Then I have a site plan, which Bob has already addressed, but it really is included in the package only to reference the fact that in April sixteenth, during the meeting with the neighborhood residents, that was the point at which, at which the plan changed. And we shifted from a previous selection of other palm trees that grow in Southern California, which gets substantially taller than the, than the Queen, than the King Palm, including a Queen Palm and a Phoenix Palm and others, which you're all probably very familiar with. To make the specific selection, to go back to the King Palms because they would, they have the specific characteristics that we felt were representative of the requirements and what the issues the neighbors addressed during that meeting. So just to be a little bit more specific, and then also, there's two other sheets which address the particular characteristics of the two trees that are planted along Marguerite, along the edge, to give you an idea of their characteristics and their growth in terms of how they're going to look from that particular view, looking down Marguerite from the north. So really, Queen, or I should say, King Palms originated or are characteristic of the eastern rainforest of Australia. So in that situation, they can grow to forty feet in height because they're getting almost constant rainfall. In Southern California, where you have a relatively arid environment, typically they grow to thirty feet. And in best-case conditions, they can grow to thirty-five feet, but that's pretty uncharacteristic. In our experience, typically they grow to between twenty-eight and thirty feet in height.
Are you speaking of the trunk height now or the overall height?
Speaking of the overall height. I think the thing that's unusual about this project is that we were able to locate trees that were actually in an estate in North San Diego County. And we didn't find these trees in a nursery. We looked for a long time. We couldn't find consistent trees at the same height. And we actually found these trees, one of the nursery representatives found them in an estate. And one of the reasons we selected them is because they were all very consistent and very mature. So the average age of the trees is somewhere between thirty and forty years old. The thing about palms in general, and specifically about King Palms, is that, well, it's true for a lot of living organisms. The older they get, the slower they, they grow. So with a life expectancy of about between seventy and eighty years before they start declining, the trees that are on the site right now are mature specimens. This is a very unusual situation because we would have not found those in a normal nursery environment. The other reason that they're selected, or there's a number of reasons, is they are one of the major street trees that identify Corona Del Mar along Pacific Coast Highway. They're characteristic of the area. They have very slow to moderate growth rate in general. And specifically, they were selected for this project because they, they met the requirements, we felt, of the criteria that was originally stated when we had the meeting with the neighbors. So in a sense, from my personal point of view, it's, it was a surprise to some degree to, to have the response that we got in the beginning about the palm trees in general, just because we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort trying to select these particular trees versus other species that we knew would grow much taller and eventually get into the view shed of the, of the residents. So I think that's, it's stated here in my description, but I think I've pretty much covered most of the elements unless you have any questions.
To the extent that the trees get to forty feet, let's say, can they be topped or trimmed without doing damage to the tree?
Palm trees in general can't be topped or trimmed. I mean, realistically, you can, you can do a little bit of trimming to them, but essentially it, it impacts the character and the look of the tree, so it's not, it's not typically done.
But these trees aren't anticipated to get to forty feet?
They are not anticipated to get to forty feet. Any? Oh, yes. Thank you. Now, there was another concern expressed by one of the neighbors as to the view specifically along the western edge of Marguerite, looking down from the north. And in the packet are the two selections that we've got on the plan in that location. One of them is called the Golden Medallion Tree, which is a cassia. And the typical growth characteristic of that tree is between twenty and twenty-five feet, so it's relatively, let me get a picture there, but yeah. So typically twenty to twenty-five feet. The thirty-foot height that's shown in the photograph there is above the light pole along the edge. So those are going to be, oh, yeah. Thanks. So this is the thirty-foot mark. So for the, and when it says twenty to twenty-five, my experience for those trees is they're more typically in the range of twenty. They might get to twenty-five, but it'll be a very old tree before it gets to that age. The other tree that's an alternate to that, which is kind of their, they alternate one after the other along the street, is the Tababuya, which is the pink trumpet tree. And that gets to a maximum height, according to the literature, of thirty feet. But in my experience, in both cases, those trees don't get to be really, really that tall. I would say a safe estimate for both of those would be definitely twenty-five feet in the long term. The other characteristic about the tree, and maybe this doesn't have any impact in a particular point of view, but they're both lacy kind of open-type trees. So they're not, it's not a heavy head that completely blocks views. It actually has a light, lacy character that flowers, and essentially they're relatively open in terms of their overall character, so. Those are, those are definitely easier to trim and can, can be kept, you know, at a, at a lower height if desired. They, you know, any, any real severe trimming or topping does impact the character of the trees over time, but yes, they can be controlled. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
If I could request the council, there's a couple of members from Sandcastle here, and I'd like to maybe voice some concerns. In talking to our consultant team and looking at these photographs, I don't know if, or I really foresee a problem. If we got into forty feet, it'd be an issue, but it looks like we're lower than that, and our experts are saying we're going to be lower than that. But I'd like to obviously have the Sandcastle residents say something and maybe get some guidance from council if you'd like us to produce some kind of deed restriction or something to, to go along and talk about later on the property.
All right, thank you, Dave. We will open this up then for public comment. For anyone who'd like to come up and speak to the matter, please come to the podium and state your name.
Hi, I'm Jim DeGrotto. I live at eight, seven, four, Sandcastle Drive. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you very much for letting us speak tonight. I have information that completely counterdicts everything that Bill just, just mentioned, and I'd like for you to have a copy of this. The King Palm is a fast-growing palm tree. And what, what I, what I would like you to do is to look at the information that they have given you. If you would please look at the Lemons residence in the simulated view, the palm trees that are drawn in that simulated view. That is what we were told, that these trees would look like, they would never, ever, ever get taller than thirty feet. And so when we went to the meeting, we were promised that these trees were going to be fifteen to seventeen feet tall when planted, and they would never, ever get taller than thirty feet. These trees right now, there are some of them that are already thirty-three feet tall and growing. They've already grown about eighteen inches since they've been planted. Living in the, where I live, I can focus on an object and relate it to the way the trees are right now. Several of the trees, when they were planted, they had single fronds pointing up. Now those fronds have just flourished. So slowly but surely, my view of old Corona Del Mar is very quickly diminishing already, today. We're not talking ten, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. I have lived in my home for twenty-eight years, and my view has slowly diminished because of city trees. Now, when he talks about the worst-case scenario these trees ever get into forty feet, Now, when he talks about the worst-case scenario these trees ever get into 40 feet, at 35 feet, these trees, at my location, which is six houses up from Mark, and probably I'm about 10 to 12 feet taller, higher than he is, my view of Old Corona Del Mar is already starting to be diminished. I took about 20 minutes yesterday and drove around Corona Del Mar, and I found approximately 10, 10 or 12 king palms in Corona Del Mar that exceed the 40-foot mark. So, for him to say that's very unusual, it took me 20 minutes to find 10 of them. So, it is not uncommon that these trees will reach the 40-foot mark. If they ever reach the 40-foot mark, which I'm sure some of these will, what we will see from Sandcastle will be a complete blind of king palms. We will not be able to see Old Corona nor the view. And what we would really like to establish tonight would be a maximum height of 35 feet on these trees marking from the ground. Once they get to 35 feet, we would like to see these trees removed. We were promised that these trees were going to be 15 to 17 feet tall, and that they would never, ever get to 30 feet. And so, we all agreed to that. Now, day one, 33 feet on the tallest tree there, today. I am a licensed realtor. I've been selling, I've sold real estate in Corona Del Mar Newport Beach for over 20 years. And if I wanted to sell my house today, somebody coming in my backyard and see the screen of 26 palm trees that go directly across my view, the perception of that diminishes the value of my property. Let's say 10 to 12 years from now, when these trees are another six feet taller, my property value will again diminish tremendously. Even though they may never get that tall, it's just the perception of it will diminish my view. So, what we would like to get tonight would be some sort of a written document that we could put in our files, so when any of us put our homes on the market and a prospective buyer goes in the yard and sees the screen of king palms, and if you can see the cluster of them, it will be a screen. We will not be able to see through them. So, I'd like to also give you these pictures of the homes in Corona Del Mar, the trees that are already over 40 feet tall. And it wasn't, it's not uncommon, trust me. The trees at the oasis will get plenty of water, plenty of sunlight, and they will reach that height. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there other speakers? Please come forward.
My name's Larry Weisoff, 1407 Outrigger Drive, president of the Harborview Hills South Homeowners Association. We've had some of these problems with other trees in the past. Ed Romeo was on the board. He called me two weeks ago, prior to the meeting that was going to be held at the site. And he also was on the oasis committee for the building, you know, doing the building and also on the board of directors. And he was telling me if the trees were changed, they gotta be smaller. The idea was that when they were designing this thing and setting it up at the time, when he was handling it for both the associations, was that the views would be protected. I'm a licensed contractor. I've done several storm drain sewer project, water line projects in the city. Jasmine Creek Storm Drain, El Paso Storm Drain, drained for the Corona Del Mar swimming pool. And there's certain rules that I was required to take, and the existing contractors should be required to take. Number one, if the tree that was specified could not be purchased at the time of the bid, he's supposed to tell you that ahead of time and let you know, so you can put out an addendum and set it up, so you're not going to have a tree that's going to block a view. Or, if the tree can be purchased, then he's supposed to get a price and put the price in. There shouldn't be a change. And to change the tree, because they want to pour sidewalk or something like that, is not really a good idea. I've been a resident in Harborview Hills South since 1976. Basically, the construction went in from about 1968. I became a member of the board in 1982. All along Sandcastle, the whole length of Sandcastle, there were eucalyptus trees. And the last company with the city's approval planted those eucalyptus trees. And the homes above Sandcastle lost their views. And it became the big thing with the city, is they wouldn't trim the eucalyptus trees because they got too tall to trim. We, the association worked with the city, that if homeowners wanted to remove a tree, it had the homeowner that had made the request, it had to be on the frontage of his property, and somebody had to come up with the money for the replacement of the tree. Lo and behold, we had about six or eight trees that they worked with the city. And then suddenly, during the next four or five years, all the eucalyptus trees were removed on lower Sandcastle, and nobody knows by who. They were just gone. Now, is that what's going to happen to these palm trees, if they get up and block a view? It's imperative that the view, the city lives to what the word was to the homeowners, that these views will be protected. Now, I don't think the idea of looking at halfway up above the roof or something like that, is that if the tree goes up there, it's blocking the view. Let's face it, the whole idea is really the ocean and the sunsets and that type of a situation. But to make the change in the tree and to have these different opinions, when the idea was set up prior to even going to bid, what was going to be there? And you've seen the pictures, the pictures where the little white clouds are, where the trees are going to be, and they're a lot shorter than they are now. I just can't see how somebody just on a whim makes a change in the tree without having it set up, you know, ahead of time and telling somebody what's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next place.
My name is Mark Puchegian, and I live at 850 Sandcastle Drive. Just one from my backyard that shows through the wall, where we show the foliage on the slope. Yeah, something, go back. No, no, no. One, we got another one up there. Yeah, like that. The wall that you see in my backyard is not in the homeowners' association. Mr. Webb and I, we chatted the other day. When he was in the public works department, we worked out a transaction where I purchased about four feet by 60 feet of land from the city. And part of that acquisition, $6,250, allowed me to build, extend basically my backyard onto two parcels. So, the parcel that's in the homeowners' association is basically where you see the first arm of that chair. The second chair is outside the homeowners' association. It allowed me to build a bigger backyard, a bigger side yard also. When we negotiated the purchase, we negotiated that, right there, the city agreed to me in 1991, when the land was purchased, that foliage would never get above that soldier coursing of brick, that my view from the glass above would always be intact. Now, I went to the city. I purchased the land from the Parks and Recreation Department. That's what it was named back then. And I went to their department this week, or last week, and all the records are gone. There's nothing. There's no proof. There's no documentation. They contacted the city's attorney's office, nothing. I contacted the city's attorney's office, never received a phone call back. And my concern is, I know what I had. I know what that city council did in February of 1991, when they approved the acquisition. And as far as I'm concerned, I used to be able to call the Parks and Recreation Department. Within a day or two, somebody would come out and weed whack that foliage. I haven't done anything recently because of all the construction work. But I had an assurance. The city honored that assurance. But now, there's no documentation, and now things are changing. I just want to make sure, you know, my view's already been impacted by the building. But with that corridor, I'm not affected by the palm trees. I'm not affected by that. But the canopy trees, the one question you didn't ask was, how broad does the tree get? You asked how tall it gets. When we met, it was a canopy tree. It gets about 20 to 25 feet wide and 25 to 30 feet tall. All I want is the assurance that the foliage on the slope will continue to be cut, and that anything that impedes with my glass line will be kept below the glass. That's all I request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? You've spoken, sir. Sir, other speakers?
Hello, council. My name is David Hodgkins. I'm on the board of directors for Harborview Hills South. I'm here representing the, several of the homeowners who had issues. I met with the gentleman a few weeks ago on the site, and I just want to reiterate our position that we'd like to maintain the views as they relate to the overall skyline. I know you can't see the water view from these pictures, but it is definitely there. I've been to several houses on that street, and the homeowners are rightly concerned that the palm trees, which are now mature trees that you put on, on day one, will grow into that view. We have a very unique microclimate down in Corona Del Mar. It's cooler than it is everywhere else. There's a lot more precipitation in the air, a lot more dew in the air in the mornings. And we are very concerned that the trees, on day one, are already in a very mature state and have the potential to impact our views. We'd like to have some kind of assurance from the council in writing, that if these trees, tops of the palm fronds, start to impact the ocean view, that we can have them removed and replaced. And that's my position as a member of the board, bringing to you today. So, thank you for letting me speak to the board.
Thank you. Sir, you've spoken. You only get one chance to speak on the item. You use your full time. Are there anybody else who'd like to speak from the public? All right, then let me ask Dave to come back to the podium. And Dave, you had some options for the council to consider. You want to outline those?
Well, there's not too many, other than, as you know, the trees, they're palm trees. And we can do some limited cutting of the top fronds, but you really can't top this tree. So, once it hits its 30, 35 feet, and again, the experts are saying, we think they're going to be 30, 35 max. We don't see a big problem. If they do get into 40, we're going to probably block some blue water and maybe sky views there. So, one of the options you might have is some kind of what we call deed restriction. You put something on our property that says, should these trees ever become this certain height, the city will remove them. In talking to Bill, my guess is these trees are about 20 to 30 years old, they're at mature state now. They came off an estate down in San Diego. We had a real difficult time finding trees, and we actually went to go, we went through the Irvine Company, through Instant Jungle, and they actually located some for us. So, the Instant Jungle folks, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, on this, actually said that these are pretty much at their mature height, they might grow another couple feet, two or three feet. So, we're pretty confident we're not going to have a problem. But again, there are examples of higher trees. So, you would have a choice of a deed restriction, you have a choice of, per your policy, you could call this in this context of framing views, you could do nothing and let maybe readdress it sometime in the future if they become a problem. Or you could have us remove them and put in a smaller species. And again, not being an expert on palms, but you don't have many choices. You have pygmy palms that get really small, and then your king palms are about the slowest growing that you can get, and they top out about 30, and then they go higher from there.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
When we were doing the oasis, I wish some of you were on the committee. One of the things we did, we did make a commitment about the view. And I know that Bob Coffey, when we first looked at the landscape plan and talked about the palms, he was like, no, 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 no. Those palms are too tall. I've made a commitment. And he felt very personally that not just the city had made a commitment, but he had personally made a commitment. So, I know there's been a great effort to meet the residents' needs. We have, you know, something off the internet, we have some examples of tall palms. We have a landscape architect who's done a lot of work on this and who assures us that they're only going to grow a certain height. I guess we should refer to President Reagan, you know, we will trust, but we will verify. I think that to give these people some kind of assurance, that if we should be wrong, and the tree should exceed that height, that we will act, that they will be removed. We can, palms can be usually replanted and everything. I think in view of the way this project has developed, that that would be the right thing to do.
Mr. Selich.
Yeah, this is kind of like deja vu. If you recall, when we were doing the palms on Coast Highway, we planted a number of date palms at the intersection of MacArthur and Coast Highway. And we had similar discussions at that time with Harborview Hills Homeowners Association, and very much the same concerns about how the trees would grow and all of that. And it was solved very simply, just by a letter from the city to the Harborview Hills Homeowners Association, indicating that if the trees ever grew up into the view plane, that the trees would be removed and shorter trees planted. And as has been stated, palm trees are kind of like commodities. So, you let them grow, and they get more valuable. You pick them up and move them somewhere else and put shorter ones in.
Mr. Hen.
Yeah. How much did we pay for those trees that we put in there, in terms of the trees that we're talking about that would actually block views if they grew too high?
I don't have a specific prices included in the lump sum bid for the contract, but because there's some.
Rough and tough. But what would you estimate those trees are worth each?
Well, I think the price that was, was in the estimate is normally designated by trunk foot. So, when they're in the nursery, you're only measuring from the base to where the fronds sprout out of the tree. And so, those are, it was about $125 or $30 a trunk foot.
Okay, that doesn't help me a lot.
Well, let's see. Overall, you know, I'm not sure what the...
Rough and tough. What, you know, approximately?
$50,000, maybe?
For the whole kit and caboodle of trees there?
No, for the palms only.
I mean, yeah, for the palms that we're talking about.
There's 22 of the palms. Yeah, because by the time you talk about the material costs, and then it's usually double to install it.
Okay. After all that, we're talking $50,000, $60,000. If we had to, if it turned out that the trees that we planted had no value to anyone else at a later date, we might be talking about spending another $50,000 to satisfy the homeowners' requirements here. Is that right?
Yeah, probably a little less than that, because we'd have to change species. We had a tough time finding these.
All right. So, this is not a major financial undertaking on the part of the city, right? Seems to me we ought to be able to provide some sort of an assurance here, and if it becomes a problem, we fix it.
We might be able to sell them, too. Well, honestly, not to make that a part of the issue, but honestly, mature king palms, which are so difficult to find, in terms of supply and demand, become incredibly valuable. The reason that these actually were less, in terms of the overall price, because of the fact that they were on an estate, they weren't in a nursery, the grower agreed to dig them and move them directly to the site and plant them in the same process. So, we saved considerable amount of money if you were to try to find a tree, you know, in a normal situation, it would have been more expensive.
I would just, you know, the trees are in Councilmember Gardner's district, the people are in my district. I think Councilmember Gardner's suggestion is a good one, and if we can find a way to document our intent to, you know, deal with the trees if they get over, let's say, 35 feet, or whatever is appropriate, whether it's a deed restriction or other documentation, I'll leave that to the city attorney to determine. But some evidence that is satisfactory to the homeowners, even in the information provided here, it indicates that the height is generally 20 to 30 feet, and that 40 feet is a maximum height. But nonetheless, I think Councilmember Selich made a good point. We need to agree to deal with it if it becomes an issue, and in whatever form that's best evidenced.
Actually, I like the idea of writing a letter to the association. Actually, I like the idea of writing a letter to the associations. As opposed to a deed restriction.
I would be opposed to a deed restriction myself. A letter, I think is much more appropriate. I'm curious about, could we have our landscape architect look at the pictures we were handed out? I'm, here's the next one right here. I was just curious if he would agree that those are also king palms. I was particularly impressed with the pictures that show the palm trees up against the oasis buildings because they provide, they're mature enough to where they provide some sheltering of the buildings. They look particularly good rather than a short stubby tree that doesn't have much of a trunk to it, that's going to take twenty-five years before it has any substance. I would believe our landscape architects comment related to this being a relatively slow-growing tree. We've had the trees on Coast Highway in for, what, about seven years now? And I haven't noticed any significant growth at all. At least, they look to me like they're almost smaller than when they were put in. But maybe I was used to the very beautiful ficus trees that used to be there.
Do we have enough guidance on this, Mr. Webb?
Yes, we do. We'll...
Okay, thank you.
We'll do some, thank you.
The, anything else, Mr. Kiff? Next item on the agenda is any public comments for items not on the agenda? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on a matter not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, just because you might, I'm not seeing if anybody gets up. Maybe we could ask Chief Parker, and I think I see Chief Johnson back there, if they wanted to maybe come up and make some brief public comments about how things went over the four.
Sure, that'd be very perfect.
I think this is a good opportunity. And a number of you have asked those same questions. Maybe Chief Parker first?
Okay.
So this isn't officially a public comment, Steve. Sorry to put you guys on the spot there, but you're good at this.
Good evening. I have some information for you regarding just the fire department side of our emergency responses for the day. I don't have it broken down into detail from dispatch center yet, but we had a total on Saturday, for instance, of thirty-two emergency calls for incidents in that twenty-four hour period. On Sunday, July 4th, we doubled that to sixty-two. And on Monday, July 5th, we had a total of thirty emergency incidents. Now, obviously, on the 4th, that was quite a high number that jumped up. I looked on a yearly basis, annual, if we just divide up all the days of the year. We averaged twenty-six calls a day for emergency service. So certainly on the 4th, it was a lot busier for us. Fortunately, nothing real serious or critical or tragic in nature. We did have one structure fire on the night of July 4th. Coincidentally, I was in town at a social function. Just about the time I was getting ready to leave, the working structure fire, which you may have seen the press release today, occurred on Vista Bonita at about nine-twenty. That was a little tricky. And when our crews arrived, the type of thing we don't want to hear is a resident or a neighbor said that there were possibly four children trapped in the house. That's the worst thing you want to hear when you arrive on something that's already burning with smoke showing. So that turned out to be an erroneous report. Everybody that lived there was, happened to be out of the house watching the fireworks and did not return. So they controlled the fire. Fortunately, no injuries to residents or the firefighters. As far as the lifeguards, we have a summary report on the three days. Total rescues by the lifeguard department on Saturday, July 3rd, was only six total rescues. They had eight-hundred-and-seven preventative actions during that day. That's just going and advising people to move out of a certain area, getting to a safer part of the water. However, on Sunday, July 4th, the rescues shot up, coinciding with the increase in the surf height, no surprise, to two-hundred-and-fifty-three rescues on that day and over three-thousand preventative actions. On Monday, July 5th, we had seventy-four rescues and almost nineteen-hundred preventative actions. That's definitive where the lifeguards are going out and assisting someone to get themselves to a safer place. In the estimates of the lifeguards, people on the beach were, Saturday was about sixty thousand. Sunday was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand. Monday was eighty-five thousand for a total of the three-day holiday weekend of about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand people. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any fireworks incidents?
Not to my knowledge. We had no other fires related. The fire, the structure fire was not fireworks-related. It was actually a, the laundry room, probably a dryer that was left on. But no, no reported fireworks at this time that we can relate either injuries or fires to fireworks.
Chief, I know you weren't here last year, but do you have any feeling for how these numbers compared to a year ago?
I do not with me this time. I'm sorry.
Thanks, chief. Good job. Chief Johnson, come on down.
Mayor Curry, a member of the city council. Glad to be here. The numbers from this weekend, like my counterpart there from the fire department, I was not here last year either, so I don't have a real good comparison to give you in terms of the crowd size that was here. But according to my staff, they thought it was similar, maybe a little bit larger than last year. However, not as condensed around the triangle area, partly because of the plan of the fencing and so forth. But for the numbers themselves, one-hundred-and-seven arrests this year. That's a ten percent reduction from last year, which is at one-hundred-and-nineteen. Eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven calls for service that our dispatchers handled this year. And I actually sent each of you an email probably about an hour ago, forty minutes ago, that gives you some more details on some of the statistics. We are going to be having a more formal briefing or debriefing with my staff later this week. And we'll get a detailed after-action report done once we do that and have a little bit better idea of how it compares to last year, some of the new plans that were put into place this year, how effective they were, and maybe some suggestions for next year. With that, any questions of me?
I just noticed that you sent an email earlier about that you had, were on, in a patrol car and everything and going through the area, and that you noticed that the crowds were actually, you felt they were a good crowd, even though there were a lot of people, that the mood was good and not, didn't seem likely to tip over into something.
Yeah, well, let me tell you, ma'am, my comparison, my comparison is to twenty-three years in Long Beach and the crowds in Long Beach. And comparatively, I felt right at home here in terms of crowds. And certainly, there is a lot of alcohol, a lot of drinking. Matter of fact, of our arrests, sixty-seven of those arrests were for drunken public. So there were those issues. But other than that, I didn't feel particularly unsafe myself in terms of walking down the streets and shaking hands and meeting some of the people out in the, out in the community. We did have a couple of arrests that resulted in uses of force of people that fought with our officers. Matter of fact, one of our officers sustained a broken hand as a result of that. But, you know, those are few and far between. Those are going to happen anytime you get large crowds together with alcohol. But other than that, I didn't think the crowds were particularly unruly in that regard. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, chief, I commented at the briefing on Sunday that if things went well, you get to take all the credit on your first day on the job. But I do, and I'll have more to say about this tonight. I think the police department's strategizing of this and execution of it was really excellent, and I really appreciate it. I was out there myself, and I would agree with your comments about the crowd. It did seem like a larger crowd to me this year than a year ago. And yet, the tenor of the crowd seemed less wild, if you will. And so it looks like we've got a good start on our plan here over time to get to a much more of a family-friendly Fourth of July on the peninsula. And I just want to thank you and especially Captain Johnson and Lieutenant McKnight and all the guys, of course, that supported all this. It's, it was really a great effort. Thanks.
Yes, and I want to thank you for your involvement as well because I know you had a lot to do with this in the planning stages. I, of course, was not here for the planning, but I've heard that you were very involved and very much had a big stake in this, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks. I should, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that I ran into the city manager on his bicycle on Sunday afternoon. So I know he was on the beat as well. And of course, Dave has shown a lot, Dave Kiff has shown a lot of leadership in this process as well. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you, chief. Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned until seven o'clock.